Awesome. So. Welcome. Hello, everybody. We don't have, we're missing a couple of people. To start off with. Dave, Commissioner, former Commissioner Gabriel Wojtek, former Commissioner, Commission Chair. Gabriel Wojtek is now Grand County's newest interim Clerk Auditor. So he's two rooms away from me cooking the books. And we don't have a commission liaison because it's just happened last week. So that's one person down. And Sheik and John have been no shows. I did talk to Sheik recently. He sounded interested to continue. But we'll see if he shows up today. And then John kind of indicated that he's probably gonna vacate his position. So those are two positions we need to fill and get a new commission liaison. And then after that fact. I'll elect the Chair and Vice Chair. So there's some housekeeping to do. But some good news. I'm August. You know me. This is Ben. You know Ben. Over here, we have Rachel Bartlett, if you want to wave your hands, who is our new administrative assistant in our office. So we have some support. She's been spending the week catching up on old meetings, putting together meeting minutes. So hopefully we'll have. At the next meeting, a bunch of minutes to approve. So that all of these meetings have really good records for the public and are very transparent in the future. I'm all chair today's meeting for now. Given kind of what I just shared. So are there any, I guess I should call this meeting to order of the Economic Development Advisory Board. I note that we have Jasmine Duncan, Kelly Thornton, Rob Walker, Brad Bertasch, August Graniff, Ben Alter, and Rachel Bartlett in attendance. Are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or ex parte communication to disclose? Seeing none, are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we did introductions. Maybe we do have a citizen to be heard. Just wait one second. Royal Utah Project had just had. Asked if there are any citizens to be heard. Sam, are you here? Do you have anything to share with this body? Or are you here observing?
I'm here observing. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. And then we don't have any presentations outside of the body scheduled today. So we'll just get right into it. I'm gonna share my screen. We're gonna start off by going over. Just a quick review of the Royal County Grant Budget and kind of the timeline that we're thinking we'll have to do for the rest of this year, just so that we're abreast of that. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so a couple of things. We have slides to go over the Royal County Grant kind of process and numbers. Ben's gonna do a recap of the Business Summit. And then we're gonna talk about these grant programs we're gonna review. With a also kind of a specific focus on, here Sheik. With a specific focus on. Developing some strategies for childcare. In the community. So I just wanted to note that. Sheik has joined the meeting for Rachel for picking Sheik on. Okay, let's go over this. So just as a quick reminder. Grand County was awarded the Max Allotment for Part A in 2022. We'll go over the line items. We were awarded Part B. A full $300,000, the highest award to anybody to support the development of the Skyline Arch apartment complex at Royal Crossing. We've gone over this before, but I just kind of wanted to remind folks on the budgeted amount line here. That describes what we proposed in the original Part A application. And then in the adjusted amount is a shifting of priorities based off some of the conversations that happened earlier this year. So notably, kind of zeroing out business support grants from Royal County Grants as we were developing a lot of grant programs from the diversification stream, the TRT budget. Same for this kind of support for women owned and minority businesses as we're gonna make that a priority within those other grant programs. Economic Development Outreach, we have a marketing line in the diversification budget. The education grants, we're hoping to put that as a part of the workforce development strategies on the diversification side. And likewise with the remote working outreach. We're still planning to hire Vista. We're gonna talk about the Canyonlands Business Summit and how we spent that money and how much will be left over. It's an additional 20 grand actually that we can reallocate. This Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program, I think, is a, could either go into. The master plan process. And so those 15 grand could be added to. Money already allocated for planning, or that could be its own separate thing. And I'd like to maybe talk about that a little bit today. On the entrepreneurship program, we were originally working with a group. Represented by Carol Cohen, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation that does a lot of trainings in rural communities. And something we ran into was that. As we've been working to place a Small Business Development Center position at the USU Moab Campus through the state network. They, basically, there's some headbutting between the RCAC program and the SBDC program. Indicating some kind of lack of compatibility there. So I'm thinking that this 30 grand will probably go towards building out some entrepreneurship programming. Once the Small Business Development Center. Is in place. And we think that that'll be around July 1st of this year. Again, that's gonna be money that's coming out of the diversification side of TRT. To pay for a full-time staff person up at USU Moab. Which leaves us kind of these two are bigger priorities in daycare and workforce housing. That I think really I'd like our, this body to focus on and figure out. How can we put together some good programs for this year before we do kind of intensive planning? Department-wide. As a kind of a focus for the Economic Development Advisory Board. A timeline. So this already happened. September 1st of 2021 was the fiscal year 2022, Part A Annual Report Submission Deadline.
Oh, no, this is, this is forward looking. This is, this is forward looking based on what happened last year because. We've reached out to the state to see if this timeline will be the same this year, and we're still waiting to find out. But I think it's reasonable to assume these deadlines will happen this fall. So we're going off of what happened last year. This is what we think will happen this year.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Ben. So really what that means is that. We have not all that much time to think through and spend this Part A money, really, right? Yes. So. I think there is kind of a time priority on really focusing on this Part A, these Part A dollars. With the assumption that we'll have to prepare a report during the summer and submit it by September 1st. The, the follow-up to that is that if the timeline is the same as last year. A month after that, we will have to, to submit our application for fiscal year 2023's Royal County Grant Program. So, you know, start to think through how do you want to spend next year's money? And then assuming that the timeline is similar. Part B. The report for Part B is November 1st. So this is the money going to the HOSU apartment complex.
Correct.
And then December 15th, if this, if it's all the same, Part B for fiscal year 23, the application for that would be. Due December 15th. So these are kind of benchmarks and milestones for this body in our office to hit for Royal County Grant. Ben, can you speak to where Royal County Grant, Part B, and the HOSU project is at this time?
Yeah, so I'm actually waiting from an update from Chris Baird. For all I know, we have actually received the first disbursement of 225,000. Since we've signed the contract with the state that should have happened, and if it hasn't, it should be happening the next few days. I'm working right now on a grant contract between the county and HOSU so that as soon as we do have an acting chair. We can get that signed and we can get the funds to HOSU and they can begin spending on the different light items that we laid out in the application. Those are all pre-development steps. And then, once we reach what the state asks for in terms of a benchmark. Once those pre-development steps are done, we'll receive the last disbursement of $75,000, which will go towards site control. But so the bottom line is, we are in compliance with the state to receive the funds if we haven't already. I don't know what delay there would be. We just need to ink the contract with HOSU so that we are in agreement of how we're going to give them the funds and what they need to. Satisfy for us to give them the next chunk. So we're very close to giving them the money.
Awesome. Yeah. Good work, Ben, on that. Thank you. I guess the high level is that we're on it. It's being taken care of. The money will be spent the right way and it'll go towards housing at a road crossing.
And can I add one other thing on this timeline? So again, this is just our estimation of how things will go. And I have gotten some. Inkling from the state that they're probably going to be a little more specific with. How the grant is dispersed in different guidelines because it seems that we've asked them a lot of good questions that they can really outline in their instructions. But one nuance I did learn that I found interesting, talking about Part B, that I assume applies to Part A as well, is that the state considers. The funds spent when they leave our accounts. So if we create expenditures and we are putting the money in other people's hands or putting them in places where it will be spent over time. The important thing is that it's leaving our accounts. That could change for this year, but I don't think it will. So it gives us some flexibility on what seems like somewhat of a tight timeline. The state wants us to see, put that money out in the community. But if it's not spent by September 1st, Part A, as long as it's out of our accounts, I believe that we will have met those requirements. That could change, but I just think it gives us some leeway.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Ben. Any, any questions on timeline for this year? From, from the, from the board?
August, yeah, I have a question. Did you say the, when do we need to spend the funds for Part A?
So the report that we have to submit, or our assumption, right? The assumption of when the report for this year's expenditures needs to be submitted to the state is September 1st. So last year, I think we started working, the time, timing last year is that we dispersed these things like first thing, 2021. And then we gave people several months to do what their thing with it. And then I put together a Google Form, got responses from the recipients. And then throughout the summer, put together a report. So we're obviously on a different timeline this year. But it sounds like so long as the money is out of our hands, probably by the beginning of August, that'll give us enough time to. Put a report together by September 1st.
Okay, so it's, it's, I guess it's, yeah, it's more about getting the money out of your hands as opposed to out of like spent by all the nonprofits, let's say.
I think that's right. Yep, that's, that's the way the program is currently laid out. They could change it for this year because again, we're just going off of what happened last year. And I've asked them for clarification on this. So we're waiting on that. But assuming that part doesn't change, that's correct.
Any other questions? Cool. Let's see. All right. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ben, who was our wonderful leader of logistics and programming and planning for. The Canyonlands Business Summit. I figured that because everything's complete, we're basically done with the financial side of the reporting and we have some good feedback from the summit. And, you know, this, this, the Royal County Grant is kind of back funding this, basically. That it'd be a good opportunity to share some results. Ben, I'll be the clicker of the thing.
Great, thank you. And before we get started, I'll just add a few things. One is that a lot of the feedback I'm discussing here is from a. Google form that we sent out to attendees multiple times after the summit. If you were at the summit and you haven't filled that out, we would still love your feedback. So if you wanna get in touch with me after this, I could send that to you. It takes two minutes. It's, it's really helpful for us. And another thing I'll add is that I'm gonna kind of breeze through some things where there's a lot of text. But we're happy to share this presentation afterwards. You can look at it a little bit more closely.
Cool. So. This page is really just to show you that we really tried to engage a number of people from the business community, from the nonprofit community, from outfitters and hoteliers and governments and all kinds of folks across both Grand and San Juan Counties. Participants, as in, these are folks who led sessions or sat on panels. And we had a really great swath of representatives. So I was just really happy about that. If you go to the next slide, you can see that. In terms of who showed up, who was in the audience, a huge representation of different businesses, nonprofits, and just individuals who want to know more about our community and what the future of business is here. The list, as I said, goes on. It was great. If you go to the next slide. So. This is the sponsorships list here. We had some awesome sponsors from our community and that raised just a little under $9,000 in total. And we're really thankful for all of them. They in some way came together and really helped out. For example, Utah Department of Health, actually, it didn't contribute any funds, but it did contribute over 150 K95 masks. And so, you know, we're just really happy to have those partnerships and whatever way they come. So if you were at the summit, we rolled out some crowd interactive surveys before we got things started. Obviously, the representation of responses here is not representative of the entire summit attendance. But I think it's just a nice chart to show you that we worked really hard to engage businesses and folks who could really benefit from these resources and information this year. So I was really happy to see that even if this is just a small chunk of who was there, clearly, the businesses, the nonprofits outnumbered the resources. That's what we want it to look like. We were really happy to see that folks felt that the resources were helpful and relevant to businesses and nonprofits, entrepreneurs. We did get a lot of positive feedback in the survey about how those resources helped folks. So we were happy to see that representation. But. And then another chart that we rolled out is we just asked folks, what are you looking to get out of today? And so I wanted to show you the kinds of responses we got. Networking, housing information, the bigger the word, the more times people entered it. Clearly, networking was on folks' minds. Again, looking at the feedback forums, this feels like a success. We were on the fence on if we could have an in-person event. And we think we did it as safely as possible. And we were happy to hold it because we got a lot of great responses from people who said they had been missing in-person events like this. They had been missing networking opportunities and they got that at the summit. So that felt great. We were really happy to put it on and that was just very gratifying. So I keep referencing the survey and there's a whole lot of responses here. I'm hoping to put together a bigger document in the future that really distills some of those, but I wanted to give you some major takeaways. So I asked folks what their favorite session was, and the majority response was the workforce recruitment and retention session, a locals perspective. I also have some responses that help me speculate on why that might have been the favorite. A few ideas. One is that we asked all the panelists to specifically focus on removing housing from the conversation. Yes, housing is the issue when it comes to workforce recruitment and retention. But if we remove that, how can we talk about workforce recruitment and retention in a productive way? And people really responded well to that. Brendan Cameron moderated, or he led that panel discussion, and I think he did a great job engaging the panelists and the audience. Another thing that I think really lent to it is that we had just an outstanding panel. You know, Brendan was the only dude we other had, we otherwise had an all-female panel of business owners balanced from Grand and San Juan Counties. They are stars in their own industries and have great success stories about how to keep employees, how to engage employees, how to make their workplace a place that you want to stay at. And so we were really happy to have this panel and it seems that the attendees were as well. Some other positive feedback we got is that most attendees, like I said, they were happy with the networking time that was allotted and they were excited to have an in-person event. For a lot of folks, they commented that this has been the first in-person event they had had in nearly two years. So we were excited to bring that back as safely as possible. And then a little over three-fourths of the survey respondents, they felt that the resources that we provided were relevant to business entrepreneur nonprofit concerns. This was something that we worked really hard to put together, especially when it came to that tabling session. Who was allowed in that very small and COVID-controlled space? We want to make sure that it was relevant to folks from our region. And hopefully in the future, we can bring in more resources. But I think in the meantime, we did a good job with the space we had. Go ahead. Okay, so some areas for improvement that we have identified. So the least favorite session for folks was the housing session. We called it in search of housing, affordable, available, anything. If you were at the summit, you probably realized that housing came up in just about every session, at least in the main ballroom. And there was generally an ask or a. A request that we save it later, for later, for this session. So it's clearly something that's on everyone's mind if you're from this region. But that comes with a caveat. That second bullet point there, a lot of folks are tired of talking about it. They feel that there's either no point discussing something that they feel is out of their hands, or there's, I wouldn't say animosity, but certainly just, you know, tempers get high in that conversation. It's hard to have a conversation about housing without people really bringing in their emotions. And we tried to facilitate that. And I think we did a good job, but people are still divided on whether it's a conversation worth having at all. The other aspect is that people want to hear more from city and county officials. We did have Jason Taylor from the city council moderating that session. But we more had him in a capacity as a former business owner who has provided employee housing. And he was pretty fresh to city council at the time. So I know that was kind of putting him on the spot to represent where the city is at. And people want to hear more from those policymakers. Attendees also felt that the sessions were too short to have meaningful discussions. And they also felt that sometimes things were too big. They wanted to have more smaller discussions about the issues that are really affecting their communities or their industries. And then a complaint we also got more leading up to the event than after the event actually, is that it was a little too government-heavy. This is something that we've talked about and, you know, there is a line that we want to balance between making sure we put on a great government's, great business summit, excuse me. And making sure that we also show people the excellent amount of dedicated government resources that want to help this region grow. So I think that that's a balance that we can strike a little better at future summits, but it's definitely something we're thinking about. I would say on that, one of my thoughts there is that part of that could just be due to the branding. It's been called the Business Summit for a long time. And that, I think, comes with certain expectations. And I think for us, really, this was an economic development summit. Absolutely. This is kind of our, it's becoming, and I think it will be more an opportunity for our office to showcase what we're up to. Right? And how businesses can be involved. And so in the future, two things I'm thinking is, A, making it grand-focused and San Juan-focused, sister events with separate priorities. And then maybe even calling it just the Economic Development Summit so that it's, it's, it is more on the face. This is going to be more government-focused because that's kind of what it is. If that's, if that's. Not what people want, then we can have that conversation. But that's, those are some of the things that I was thinking about.
And I think the other side of that coin is that we've talked about how we don't need to have one event every year. And that the goal for our office is to put on more business-focused events throughout the year, whether it's through partnerships with RCAC and doing, you know, Start, Grow, Revive workshops, stuff like that. But I think that those go hand in hand. Thank you. And last two things, 40% of survey respondents said they didn't attend the entire summit. This is not a terrible thing, but certainly I'd love to see that number lower. I think a lot of people had schedule conflicts. And I think that our office can do better in publicizing this event well ahead of time to make sure people have the time to attend it. And I also think we need to make sure that the summit is the appropriate length and engaging throughout. Last thing I'll add is that folks complain about challenges finding their way to and from events, and they struggle to understand the program format. Those also go hand in hand. I think that some of that is, how do we help folks who are from out of town navigate their way between two event spaces? But I think in the, in the grand scheme of things, there could be better event spaces for us to have this kind of summit. And that's something we're going to explore in the future.
We can go back, okay. Okay. And then I had some high-level numbers here. And in the future, we'll have some more numbers to report as we get all of our, all of our ducks in a row. We spent. $22,674 on this event. The revenue for the event was just short of $13,000. That came from two sources. One was from the private sponsors, which numbered 20. And as I said before, raised just under $9,000. And then for our paying attendees, we had 85 of them and they raised just under $4,000. I say paying attendees because we are not including in that number the sponsorships, which included between one and four tickets, depending on your sponsorship level, as well as the participants. We wanted to guarantee participants free access to the event. And we had a ton of participants. Attendees overall, this is participants paying or not, attendees paying or not, reached a little over 160. There's one or two stragglers out there that I lost track of when I was running the event. I think it's 162, maybe 163. But the good news is, is that we were able to get everyone who called in the last few days leading up to the event and put on the waitlist, we were able to get them all in. And with all of that in mind, the gap left there is going to be $9,964 that the Royal County Grant Fund will be kicking in to compensate for this event. As we saw in the chart earlier, we set aside $30,000 for this event. So that gives us $20,000 extra dollars to work with, with some of our other priorities, which is super exciting. Some other numbers I want to throw in. Did someone have a comment, Rob or someone else? Okay.
Okay. Let's just keep track of that 20,000 bucks. Make sure we get it deployed. Got that extra money. That's super.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. And then a number, another number thing that I'll throw in. So Laura Harris, who is the Americor Vista and Planning and Zoning, a colleague of ours. She was the architect of this Moab area employer housing survey, which has been going on since the summit, but was deployed during the summit. So when I say 31 day of responses, we have a ton more responses since then. But we were able to get 31 responses during the summit. That was great. If you're at the summit, we did use those responses during the housing session to talk about what was on people's minds, put those responses up on the board and see what people were saying. And just a few cool takeaways that I thought were interesting. Half of those respondents indicated that they would be willing to pay some employee housing costs if housing for their staff was provided by a third party. So something that was talked about during the housing session was how many employers want to provide housing, but there are two primary concerns. One is the cost of doing so, and the other is the liability associated with it. So it was great to see that employers do want to make this happen. Those are just big hangups. This is a great indicator for us going forward. And it was really interesting to see that starting wages in Moab are a pretty large range from 14 to $40. But most of those live in the 17 to 22 range, the lower end being about 14 and the upper end excluding that 40 being around 25. I think that is it for the summit recap. And I know I've thrown a lot at everyone. So again, I'll pass around these slides afterwards. But if anyone has any questions, I'm glad to take. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
Cool. The only comment I've got is that I think it's great about the respondents wanting to help to pay some of the employees housing. And, and I understand the fact they want some third party to do it. And I think that opens up an opportunity for other partnerships to, to do some building and do some creative housing work, knowing that the employees will be able to pay the rent.
Definitely. Yeah, agreed. It was, it was a great moment where we got to put those responses on the screen. Really helps make the discussion not so black and white. People understand the need and want to do something about it. So yeah, thank you.
Cool. All right, let's next time here. So on the agenda, next is talking about these kind of priorities that we haven't quite defined programs for yet. Um, with a, a specific focus on, you know, childcare first, I would say. And then thinking about workforce housing support second, and then, um, you know, a diversity equity and inclusion program third for this body. So I, I think what would be useful today would be, you know, identifying what is the role of this board in developing those programs? Is it creating a task force? Is it having individual people with specific priorities who are going to think about that? Or is it kind of, should we just be brainstorming next step processes for our department to take on? I think a good first step, you know, for childcare, last year we supported the Moab community childcare program. So maybe something that might be useful would be just having Rob give us an update on what's going on over there. But I would, I would probably propose some kind of listening engagement with the existing childcare business community in Moab to figure out, um, what is the most effective thing that we can do with these dollars to grow the existing businesses, create additional licenses, more staff, connect with existing programs, state and federal level. And just put together some kind of a, count halls may be the wrong word, but just like a listening conversation with those folks. But Rob, maybe I'll have you give us a community childcare update.
Yeah, sure thing. And I'm happy to kind of like, you know, develop different ideas for how money could be spent or to run those events you talked about relating to childcare. That's like what I'm kind of doing anyways. So, so in terms of, yeah, our center, uh, it's been going great lately. We have hired a director who started a few weeks ago and we're just going through the process of getting our license, which is a lot of things to do and to get started for the first time. We're probably still, I mean, I had to guess at least two months away from having a license. Just we're, you know, working on, we have to have a giant policy manual for every situation with kids and parent handbook. And so we're, we're updating those from ones we got from like a Park City childcare. So that shouldn't take us too long, but a lot of little things to do, but we're in really good shape. We are having other worker set up as well that will likely hire. We have to get like our new hiring procedures and everything squared away. The board's a little bigger. We added Daniel McNeil from Grand Area Mentoring to it. So there's four people on the board now. What else? We're, we, I don't know if I mentioned, we're changing our focus to toddlers to start with from infants. Just because, uh, just of like kind of ease of startup. The ratio of, of caregivers to, to kids is a lot less intense for staffing needs. And it's just going to really ensure that we'll be able to operate it, it kind of like a, a net, you know, positive position for the first year or so. So we're going to probably do two to four year olds and we'll probably have fourteen spots for them. There's a lot of things that are coming up around it, which this might touch a little and, I mean, that's kind of like, like the quick update on where things are going. Like I'm working a few hours a day, you know, kind of in working with our director to keep moving everything forward. And lots of little, 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 little things that we're getting done. In terms of, sort of like if I were to transition, I sent you guys an email of August and Ben just right before when this started with some ideas of what we can do in the future. That I, that I thought of for supporting both Moab community childcare and as well as just the overall community. I can do those now. And if you want to give me a time, I'll talk to them. Or, or I can just, we can do it another time. That's kind of.
I think, I think now is a great time. I can also share the email or just have you talk about it. You can share it out in a better document later.
Yeah, I mean, it's rough. You can send it out to everybody if you want. You know, it, I, I guess I'm glad I can talk about it because, you know, with work, when you send something that's documented, it's like good to give a little color that, you know, this isn't like a formal thing that has to be a certain way. But I did write it in a way that was kind of formal, just to say, here's what like our thoughts are now. So I think for instance, like the idea of meeting with existing providers and seeing if there's any way we can offer them, you know, we can help incentivize them to increase their spots through with money would be great. My gut is that I don't think we could. But there, what could be a, a, an issue we have to deal with, with supporting new developers, giving them cash, which I think would work to incentivize someone to open a new center in their home versus an existing center which wouldn't get subsidies. So let me just talk to the three things. So, um, the, the first two are related to Moab community childcare specifically and how we could use money efficiently, effectively to do something to great, get more spots. First is to, that one issue with the state of Utah law, they have really awesome subsidies for everybody to get childcare. However, there's a big, there's one problem that I see, which is that they don't let people who want to be a caregiver. Every, I think nine out of ten of them we've met with all have their own kids that need childcare. And the state does not allow them to qualify for subsidies because they think it's like equivalent to paying someone to watch their own kid. Which makes sense in theory, but it results in less people that are, they're not able to now work full-time to watch kids. They can't get the funding to watch their own. I think it's, um, one of my proposals is that the, we, is that, you know, from, from, from my community childcare hat is asking the county through this program to support caregivers and, and give them a subsidized tuition payment that they would have kind of been getting otherwise from the state. And based on our direct cost of care and giving them a co-pay, it works out to something like it would be asked for maybe five thousand dollars per caregiver's kid for a full year. Now I would assume that the caregiver works full-time and watches other people's kids. So I think that's like a good multiplier effect. And I think we could do that effectively with between two and three spots. So that would be maybe up to ten to fifteen thousand dollars would be the request for that. There's more detail, a little on the, on the note. The second idea would be that most people will qualify for these subsidies based on their income. But as you all can probably imagine, any program with paperwork, uh, there are going to be people that fall through the cracks and will not qualify that should be eligible based on their incomes. This also would include undocumented families, you know, which, you know, I hear from Sea Haven and multicultural is, is definitely a thing in our community. So essentially I look, talk to the state and we can have essentially sort of like financial aid available. And that won't get in the way of our state license where we can decide to subsidize individuals if we want to. So, um, you know, I propose that the, the level of funding would be similar to what we ask for, for the caregivers' children, which would be not what we're going to charge everybody, but just in line with our direct cost of care, like our variable cost of care. You know, so it's less than, you know, our insurance, doesn't include our insurance and things like that. About five thousand dollars per child. And I think up to two spots for our initial fourteen would be plenty to have that. So that'd be a really cool program, I think as well. That would, and again, increase the spots. It would just increase the availability and the inclusivity of what we're offering and help fill a hole, uh, again, another hole. The third thing is probably the most interesting. And, uh, you know, cause I, I don't, again, like, like I don't think that with our existing center, our existing center is going to be fourteen spots. The need for childcare in this community, I wrote a short little business plan that I sent to you guys too. And I got some data, some pretty good sources, which is cool, on the actual need for childcare in Grand County. There's one hundred forty-seven spots available right now in about, I think it's like ten centers. I have the exact list. Many of those are in-home daycare facilities. Those spots are for, you know, up to kids ten years old. It's not just infants or toddlers. There's about a hundred kids born each year here and based on a survey by workforce services, about seventy-five percent of families have a need for childcare. So they estimated that under, kids under the age of six, there's four hundred sixty-five needed spots. So, um, you know, there's only about thirty percent of the need covered. There's about three hundred spots that we need before everybody who wants a spot could get one. So a huge number. We're going to be fourteen. So, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of interesting to think about how we're addressing the problem relative to say like other organizations that are, have to kind of drink from the fire hose right away. Like, I don't know, like Sea Haven, like they don't serve five percent of the need. Like we're going to serve five percent of the need, which actually makes it nice that we won't have, we have, you know, as intense. Our employees will probably be able to handle it. They won't have three hundred kids that day one to deal with. But we have to work on how can we scale up as fast as possible. So I think one way, and this is not a fully baked idea. I don't know a lot about setting up in-home daycare centers, but I've met with a few people who run them. And it does seem that it's a lot easier to set them up than a licensed center. And, um, and for an individual, you know, who is often watching their own children, it's a way that they can make extra money. But as long as they, you know, don't mind watching more kids, it's, there's very little startup costs. So I think we should, exploring the idea of how can we can incentivize more of those to start up. If we could, you know, with say, like, you know, I don't, again, this, I don't, I haven't figured out all the best ways of how to distribute the money. But essentially people do this because they want to make extra money. They open a in-home daycare center. I think if we offered them a little more money, then people on the fence might decide to open that center. Once they open a center, there's a nice, I think intuitive sticking cost or kind of, once you get something going and you're serving families in the community, it's hard to just close your doors because those are your neighbors that you're going to have to like put out on the street with their kids. So I think if we kind of, you know, want to essentially to get people to get started and then they'll be sticky. We won't need to incentivize them the following year to keep going. It's more of a like, hey, if you have, maybe it's a thousand dollars a kid per year or where you say, you know, after you show that you get that thousand dollar bonus, so you get, you can get up to ten thousand dollars or something for a whole year of operation. And, you know, those in-home centers, when you mix kids, you're allowed to have a much higher ratio or, you know, in terms of like, you know, one person could watch up to maybe fifteen toddlers. And I mean legally, you can do those things. Not to say that's the best ratio for not burning out. But, um, I like the idea since, you know, if you're willing to put, if you, you know, as a county, you're willing to put, you know, ten to thousands of dollars behind this, it seems like, you know, let's use these existing resources. People have homes here, they can have in-home daycare centers rather than like trying to build some giant facility. You know, staffing is, I think, the biggest impediment to growing the childcare spot supply. And so I think incentivizing, you know, sort of like an individual, like, uh, like the, to, to start their own in-home center would be a good use of money. And I think five or ten thousand dollars would go a long way to doing that. You know, remember we gave those grants to businesses last year. I think this is a bigger deal. A lot of these families relative to their overall financial statements than those businesses. I think, you know, if we could get a few, that'd be huge, a few each year. Cause right now in all of Grand County, there is, I mean, it's like ten, there's very, there's like ten total places, including these in-home centers. So, um, I think, and I, and then in terms of who would run that such a program, I, you know, I can't speak for the whole organization yet since we have a board, but I think we could certainly talk about Moab County childcare administering that program for like a ten percent fee or something like that. And we'd run it and, um, because our mission is the same mission. Our mission is not to like, we do it ourselves is to increase the supply of affordable quality care. So, okay, that's it.
Rob, uh, one question and one comment. Are things appear to be working out well with workforce services and what they'll offer as a subsidy? Is that link been made and is it working well in the, in the daycare business?
Yeah, Lisa Roman is, she works at the state licensing office in charge of the state subsidy. And she actually lives in Moab. Maybe some people here know her. She's been so supportive and it's awesome to have her here. So yeah, we've spoken a few times with her. She might even consider being on our board.
So the money's flowing from, as it relates to the state, as to what we can do so that there's money coming in. So you can make this work, business model.
Oh, there will be. Yeah. We have to get, go through the licensing program.
Yeah, I, I know you're not ready to be up and running yet, but you're close.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, yeah, the, the subsidies are, uh, yeah, they're in place. They're, they've gotten better in terms of each year. More money gets allocated to them. And then there used to be co-pays that the state required, which now are zero. So like that might change in the future, but they're very generous. She said that all you need to do is like a family needs to qualify for income, which is pretty easy. It's like a family of three, I think it's under sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
But they need to demonstrate need as well. They can't just sit on the couch and watch TV while their kids in childcare. But she said that of the people that apply, the majority of, of those people will get accepted. And the reason that people don't get accepted is usually, as you can imagine, they don't finish their paperwork.
Right, right. So do you think, uh, one possible, I'm trying to sum this up in a way that I can understand it. Cause I have to have things really simple. It sounds like if we could help fund developing sort of daycare in a box. Okay, with incentives on the backend at the end of the year, that that might be a great way to scale this business. And that one of the real good things is if we can help people develop their daycare business at home and help them go through all of that. So it's easy to set up, easy to do, and they can see the economic benefit to them for wanting to have this small business that they're going to create for childcare. And if we can really have that, so it's a, it's pretty easy to walk through and we can have a decent enough selection process that we're going to get good people to, to want to do it. It sounds like to me our money would be well spent in helping in those ways as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, as I think about it, I think, you know, like we have to focus on getting our center up and run, running and focusing on that. But this is much, to me, it seems like this could really make a bigger dent. If we can get a process, essentially like you said, childcare, daycare center in a box. Cause obviously starting a business in your house or starting any business is overwhelming for, for anybody. So if we could kind of be there, almost like a franchisee type thing where we.
Right, right. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. So I think I'd like, I would definitely would like us to move in that direction. We'll probably, you know, depending on how large the program is, they'll be, obviously you might need to hire more people or another person. But right now, the two people we have, I mean, well, we've got one officially hired and the other one, they're both kind of, you know, they have social work degrees. They're friends, like they're, you know, very qualified, whereas, you know, anyone to watch toddlers, the, the qualification requirement is, is low by the state. So I feel like that, um, yeah, administering that program, um, there's a lot of people that want to help that have done it. I think existing, I think existing daycare operators could be the consultants theoretically off the top of my head.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a way for them to earn extra money. And if we can do a sort of a best practices in a box and have someone that can help facilitate the implementation and the startup for different people to do it, you're looking that you really would like to have about twenty of these centers in addition to what we already have up and running. And, and or the equivalent of twenty centers. Maybe some people that are already up and running can expand and, and do a lot more, right? And and or the equivalent of twenty centers, maybe some people that are already up and running can expand and and do a lot more, right? And that would be acceptable as well. Uh but if that seems to be a reasonable. Uh number, then we can sort of benchmark and say, okay, how do we get, how do we get the, we get, we're working on getting the first one done. Which is what you've you've been working on. Now, how do we get the next five done? How do we, how do we systematize that? So we can get the next five done, so that maybe uh in two years. Um we could start the equivalent of, you know, fifteen or twenty. Um daycare centers.
Yeah, it's, it seems like it's, so so one distinction, it's to just reiterate is. There's a difference between a daycare center.
Well, what you're doing, okay.
Yeah, well, what I mean is that what I, what we're trying to do is I think the hardest thing, the subsidies are slightly higher for them. Um, you know, I got into this, it would already kind of was started this way. But as I see it, if I were to start from scratch, I think I'd rather do sort of this kind of like asset light model of like franchisee model.
Yeah.
We're not actually having to, like, I'm literally going to the center and like building a fence and like.
Right, right. No, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think if we could get to that.
Do that for twenty, yeah.
You know, I think that's a, that's a business model that I know I'd get behind with some of the money that we got. And and continuing to force that as if we, as long as we can get that to to scale up and get done and and and. Show that success. And I think that as we mar- marshal our money that we have, that we need to get deployed. Not spent, but deployed by, say, August. Um, you know, if we can get you guys off the ground and get that box thing done. And maybe line up our first franchisees, so to speak. So that we can get that launched. So by by the time August rolls around, we've got most of that money committed that we've got set up for. Um uh for day for childcare. And uh I I I just think that'd be just slick. So if there are things we can do uh to get the model launched. Quicker the, you know, the better, the sooner the better. Uh please come back and let us know and say, geez, you know, if we had this to do that. You know, we can, we can have this thing done in thirty days, but we lack this. And if we could get some resources that we could get that done. I think that we're all very enthused on trying to to build a sustainable. Uh model that can expand relatively quickly if properly funded uh throughout Grand County.
I I totally agree and and thanks for all the input, Rob and Brad. I just wanna make sure that we get Kelly's input here. She's at her hand raised for a minute. Kelly, do you wanna?
Go for it. I I think that it's a great idea to to work on, you know, daycare in a box. But I don't think we should be reinventing the wheel. There are already some resources out there and there are people who do consulting around getting these set up. And some licensing requirements. So I think it would be really good to look at where the gaps are. And one of those could be funding for startup costs, although sometimes there's grants for those things also. Rather than just creating a totally new product without consulting with both Office of Childcare.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Childcare resource and referral people who do that kind of consulting already.
Exactly, and who do.
They could help pull all of the different possible grants together and and make that happen. I think that's a really important thing to keep in mind. The other thing is that. And this is, you know, my agency houses the Office of Childcare, it's part of us. We don't want just everyone in the city creating an in-home childcare. We want quality childcare for people and we wanna make sure kids are safe. So I think it's really important that if county money or money that public money spent, they really need to meet. The licensing requirements for in-home childcare, which can be challenging. So we could offer definitely help for people to get there with. Things like first aid and background checks and that kind of stuff. But I I really think if we're gonna spend public money to help subsidize these, they gotta hit those marks.
You're you're right, for sure.
Go for it, Jasmine.
So Kelly, with that being said, like the 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 consultants and the agencies that are already doing those things. I mean, it would, it seems like it would make sense for us to work with them to see who's already trying to qualify for these. And then maybe with that information, then we know who to reach out to with that, with that extra subsidy.
Yeah, I think, I I think so. And they may need help. With the recruiting side because they haven't always been very successful recruiting those. So there might be some things we could do locally to really help recruit. Those folks.
And I think what Rob was saying earlier, um would would help with that, like just getting together. I don't know how you would do it, Rob. Maybe just putting the word out to people who are interested in starting an in-home. Childcare or people who have already tried but can't afford to do it because they have their own children, like you were talking about.
It's, it seems like, uh again, it's 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 just kind of, these are my my thoughts, right? I don't know, definitely. Um from my experience so far, uh you know, um. I think are are the best source for, uh I think existing providers, talking to them and saying. Uh, you know, we'll give you a a referral bonus if someone goes through the process and opens their new center. I think their friends, they tell them, hey, like I'm running this in my my house and it's working and I'm making. Like, I know one provider, she's making forty-five dollars an hour for eleven hours a week, you know, like of work. I mean, it's a real, it's a good rate for a small time. It's part-time. And so there's like stories there. I think if you have, I think it's gonna be word of mouth through them. Um that's kind of how we've gotten our um applicants for our our center. I mean, through like Audrey Graham's like top time and. Um, you know, when we hired a director, one of her friends, she was like, oh, you should work for me. And, cause I think ultimately, right, like. Think of, I'm thinking of a proverbial like mom in this in this scenario who like, they can decide to do this or not. Um and deciding to do it is like a big decision. It's like that Matrix red pill, blue pill thing. Are you gonna, do you wanna do this? Or do you wanna just like, you know, watching your kid is a full-time job, right? Or do you wanna try to make extra money on it? So I think if we could sweeten the carrot and then maybe kind of like. What then, I don't know what the other analogy is, but make the process a little less daunting or scary by having like. You know, the network of maybe we assign a local provider, we say you're gonna be a mentor and then you're gonna get a thousand dollars for a year of being like on call. Or whatever to help this one out. There definitely are existing, to Kelly's points, there are clearly existing things to help fund, like say startup costs for this stuff. Um um my 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 thought is just that like, you know, yes. You know, like we could theoretically, you could do, try to do this stuff with no money, but we have money. I think um putting more into it is gonna, is gonna help. And we could probably, it seems like these programs have a lot less. I don't know, we'll probably have like less red tape to them. Um I don't see why we shouldn't just put like more into trying to. We have to obviously make sure, Kelly, they'll they'll all be licensed and go through the licensing program and they'll have to be overseen by someone. Uh to make sure they're complying with it, that people aren't just, like, we're not just giving people money on day one and then then we have no way to.
Well, and then the more of these that get going too, I I could see back to your other point of the. The people that need childcare that are not gonna qualify for the subsidy through the state, like undocumented families and and stuff like that. Then perhaps i- if we have more of the in-home care setup that that can take care of the people who do qualify for the subsidy. Then maybe your program could cover more than just a couple of of those types of families that don't qualify. And then maybe we put more funding, um more than just for two, say, you know, towards your program. Once there's more on the ground available.
Yeah, I mean, the idea of our program initially or our center was to focus on just infants because that's the, that's the one that. Uh in-home providers can only have up to two.
Right.
So that was the thought initially, just that my my thought is like, we're starting this new thing, let's do everything we can to make this work. And so our staffing requirements for toddlers are fifty percent.
Yeah.
And we can also have, you know, seventy-five percent more kids to say. So I'm like, let's do that. And and our funding is only twenty-five percent less subsidy. So the profit, you know, which I need to think of a better word for nonprofit, but. It's, but it's, it makes more sense financially. But yeah, you're right, over time, like, maybe then the center could be kind of focused on. You know, the miss, I mean, uh infants is gonna be the hardest thing.
And some people falling through the cracks, yeah.
The other thing is weekends and nights off hours. There's a big need for that.
Yeah.
Maybe we can incentivize some of that too.
Yeah, the thought on that, Kelly, was was I was like, let's, and I still haven't gotten a good response. It doesn't seem like the state has requirements for number of hours you have to be open to get the subsidy, which seems weird to me. But. My thought is, let's, you know, like, we're not paid more, the more hours we're open, for instance. So let's start with like a forty-five hour week or something and then try to add more as if the money actually does come through the state and. Cause you know, if the finance, if the pro forma numbers I come up with actually do work out, then we can add those hours. Um, cause yes, you're totally right. Uh, you know, first is gonna be having any kind of childcare, even if it's part-time. Right? Um to let someone have a part-time job, then it's more full-time, then it's all Monday through Friday, then it's, you know, round the clock.
Well, and if that's the biggest need that we're seeing, that isn't being met too, the the nights and weekends for the people who are working those types of hours. And we incentivize people to start the their daycare for specifically those periods of time.
And I I will all say that I I wonder, Kelly, if you're also pointing to this like separate pile of need of kind of just a. Workforce of nannies and babysitters and kind of on-call people who can do that. And and that seems like maybe a separate. Project, but you know, I mean, most people typically rely on friends. You know, friends' kids who are teenagers in high school or that kind of like, that's the traditional sector of that. But maybe there's a better way to connect. Those types of folks or or even incentivize high school kids who wanna be a nanny or learn about how to do that kind of stuff and and be available to. I I don't, I I don't wanna take off more than we can chew, but that's, I'm wondering if that's a different thread to be teased out.
Yeah, let me add a little on that. Um so uh I think this is all public. Uh information, but the Family Support Center, um you know, which is, I guess, run by the county. Is um they kind of reached out to us and were like, you know, would you guys take that on for us? And like, we have funding that goes to this, essentially. You know, what it seems to do is kind of like what you mentioned, August, whereas it provides kind of like, I need someone to watch my kid right. Crisis or something. Um so I told them, you know, definitely not right now. Um they're not in a position to, it's it's definitely different from our mission. Um and. You know, I want, it just seems like can't do too many things at once to start with. But there's definitely already funding, which I think is like thirty thousand dollars or something, you know, for that. Um. That overtime could, yeah, be more holistic. I think. Yeah, as you start drive diving down, yes, like having all the different options is gonna be great. Um but we're not gonna get there for a few years, I would think, even in the best case scenario. Just having any spots for anything be um, you know, uh. You know, will be, will be a big help and then we can go from there.
Yeah, they talking more about um people who are, uh that respite care is a really important component in this. The um Family Support Center does a really great job with that. But I was more talking about reliable childcare. For people who are working three to eleven or on weekends and a lot of people in the service industry. They have to work those shifts. And so, and that's often when kids are shoveled to the neighbor at the last minute or something like that. And and it's can be unsafe.
Or they're alone.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They're sitting in the car for the the whole time or something like that and that, or they're running the streets.
Uh huh.
So it's it's definitely, I mean, the the nanny babysitter kind of component is is helpful stopgap. I think, but we're really talking about centers that maybe we can even incentivize to be open evenings and weekends. Rather than just eight to five.
Yeah, that that could be a thing that, you know, we, as as our our nonprofit could apply for a subsidy for, you know, we could say. You know, the subsidy is gonna cover our extended hours this year because we're not gonna get paid for that otherwise.
You know, you're gonna start with who you can get and where the bulk of the need is. And if the needs from four to eight at night or if the needs from. Eight in the morning till noon, I mean, that's when you're gonna operate to get, at least initially. The people that are on the fringes are gonna have to wait till there's more centers available.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be so much demand that though, yeah, we'll be able to fill spots no matter what our. If our hours are, yeah, we're gonna try to, we obviously wanna be convenient, but it's not gonna work for everybody to start with.
That's right.
And what we're doing here with the money that we have, if we're gonna consistently have this money every year and wanna allocate some to childcare every year. Then we, you know, see where these, the main needs are and see what's working. I mean, that once you get up and going and we start seeing some of these things happening. Then I, you know, we can make those decisions based on the the highest need at the time or, and I know, like, right now, we need to take care of this money this year.
Yeah.
But if we're gonna consistently do this, it would be valuable, I think, then, you know, we can start thinking about. How we get more over, you know, nighttime operations happening and and other things going.
Jasmine, and you're you're absolutely right. You can take some of the money, for example, to do that kind of an analysis. Uh at the end of the year to see what's worked, what needs, what are the few, the needs coming up. So that you can budget and plan better for next year for using the money next year. And um I think there's a little money should be put aside for that. I mean, to hi- hire somebody, a group or just have staff be able to have the extra time. To put together a good report, so we we have uh the ability to move forward and move forward with new people that may be on the committee. Can say, this is what happened, this is what works, this is what doesn't work, this is what we think we ought to go on the future. And I think we ought to make sure we can fund that. Fund that report. So so that we have good KPI going from year to year as we spend the money. And that allows to spend the money better every year down the road.
Rob, do you think that maybe that's something you can get from existing um childcare providers that you're familiar with? Like what the needs are they're seeing and some of that information, just like, you know, I'm sure they're turning away a lot of people. I've heard from people who who started in home daycares, they're just, they're so full that they could take on. I mean, they just turn people away.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, I think the idea of of, you know, I've thought about, you know, what's the best way to start approaching them? Um and having a relationship with with the providers and saying, hey, here's what we're doing. You know, we're not competing with you, we don't want, that's not our ru- goal. Um so I think, I think it makes sense to kind of create some. You know, I can, we can create some group. Um I think if we just say, hey, you know, there's this pot of money that we have to support this thing you're all doing. So um like, let's all brainstorm and work together. There's so much business to go around. Let's, let's say, let's, you know, um there's a lot of this information's all public too, like what they charge for their rates and. Um, yeah, like, uh, so I think that's maybe we can totally do over time.
I I'm wondering if if a good first step would just be like, you know, a catered round table at the bar. With all of the current providers in Grant County and just say, summarize this conversation. Say that basically we have like approximately a hundred grand or so that we need to spend this year or at least get out of our coffers this year. And that we're trying to creatively increase the supply um of spots. And we're thinking that some kind of. Um supporting an out-of-the-box franchise style in-home is gonna be the fastest way to do that. We obviously wanna fill every gap possible um and kind of do that kind of facilitated brainstorming exercise of helping us figure out. Where are the resources? Who are the experts and what are the gaps?
Absolutely.
And I think that would be a really good first step.
Yes, and I think the sooner you do that, the better.
Yeah, we.
Your hand raised?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really good idea. And I also think it would be a good idea to to sponsor some kind of a catered. Round table for employers because that's where, that's where you're really gonna know, I think. How many employers are struggling to fill slots at different hours of the day based on. The feedback they're getting from people that they don't have childcare. I think that's a piece of data, it may not be.
Yeah.
You know, scientifically valid, but I think it's a piece of data that's missing here because. One of the reasons there aren't those slots available in the community is that. Providers can fill the daytime slots easily and they don't have to then work evenings and weekends. And so. They can make that choice, which is great, but because we, you know.
Ultimately, our, uh we're thinking of child cares through the lens of workforce availability, I, is my assumption here.
Yeah, and I think, I think you'd get some really good information from employers who, especially in service industry kind of. Um occupations that that might. Be enlightening and you might find some employers that would be willing to join the, join forces and offer up some, some additional money for subsidies or.
Absolutely.
Whatever. If you ask them.
Yeah, the money I think is. The, the money is there, like, I believe I have seen the money, you know, like, like, I haven't seen it, but I believe it's there, you know, and. From the state, it's actually a federal thing that the state appropriates. You know, and, uh, and then also there's money from the county here.
Yes.
I mean, when I do the numbers, you know, we're paying our director twenty-eight dollars an hour, you know, um, to work, you know, that's fifty-four thousand dollars a year, like, that's. You know, way above what typical childcare people, but the money's there and like, we wanted, you know, incentivize people and so I think. The, the hurt, we need to convince people. Uh, you know, individual people in this community that have their kid and that say, hey, it's not that hard, you can make a lot of extra money.
Yeah.
Phrase that, it is hard.
Cash.
Make a lot of extra money, you're already working hard anyways, you know, you know, and, and then we'll hold your hand a little bit and. You know, we'll make it a little less scary and, and we'll be clear about how much money you could make and so forth.
And you can own a business of your own and just ignite some of that entrepreneurial spirit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like essentially like, yeah, you need to, it's like a sales job. It's like we need to get rally them. And I think having the success stories of the existing providers, um. Finding one or two of them and, and also just being very clear, saying, you know, you will get, you know, two thousand dollars right away for toys or whatever you want. Cause it's not gonna be a lot of, of capital and then once you get them set up, like the multiplier effect, when they can have a dozen kids there. You know, um, and then the money ultimately will be coming in from the state to pay for that. You're not, the county won't have to be covering the monthly cost of each child. So, yeah, I think it's been hard for us though, when we, when we advertise those jobs, we didn't get many applications in, you know, so that's gonna be the hardest thing about this. It all makes sense to all of us right now, but we have to convince people to like change their lives.
Hard, a hard ask. Well, so I think it sounds like there's kind of three, three audiences, there's existing providers. Employers who, who are aware of, um, you know, the slots that they can't fill, people due to. Childcare issues and then, and then employee, employees with childcare needs desperately seeking solutions. And I think probably all of them in the same room at the same time. With, with, you know, targeted prompts for each audience. Would be a really good, what would be, you know, whether it's Star Hall with a lot of capacity or, or the market with a little less capacity. You know, we could do something like that a month's time from now, you know, a week before the next meeting. And, you know, we, we have some marketing dollars for programs like this and so whether that's. You know, flyers and we'd figure out who's doing what exactly, I think, but that seems like a pretty clear deliverable start on. And it seems like, you know, with Rob being a spearhead of this. I would say that we will work with, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vo-. Oh, tell Rob that we'll, we will work on this. Idea of kind of this kind of event. And, uh, if anybody else wants to help to organize it. Then that would be kind of a, you know, subcommittee of this body. And I think that'd be a good place to start. Coming from here. And I think, you know, there's a couple of things I want to talk to you, so I'm happy to kind of put a pin in this for now and start with that as a goal. And take some final thoughts before we move on.
Yeah, I think we just, we just have an event invite some people, I have a lot of other people that I could invite that I'll, that, that are not, let's say, providers but are interested in. Supporting, I think the members of this, of this committee should attend if they want to or just hear the results from us, but you know, they could come as well.
And you've got a, you've got a great list to start with and it's the people that were excited about going to the business. Uh, summit. They have issues with work as employees and all that kind of stuff, they're highly motivated. That's a good group to just initially. Uh, add to your list of people you're gonna invite to come to this, uh, from the business side to come to this event. Because they care, that's why they were there at the summit.
Yeah, Thatcher of synergy, you know, is telling me like they're, they're like, they would give us space in their, in their facility, they really need it. I just don't know what they could really, I mean, ultimately, we don't need space, you know, we need people to run. But, but, but they're, but they, they got money and they need it and it's a, and maybe, maybe they can, you know. That'll help to, uh, yeah. Convince people that there's demand there and maybe they can add more money to the pot too, to sweeten it for some providers, I don't know.
Cool, well, I'm gonna move on. Uh, this is a really good and productive conversation and I'm glad we had it. Um, I'm gonna kind of table the housing focus. And the kind of the diversity equity and inclusion, um, kind of line item program development for now. Um, keep that in mind. Going forward of, you know, if ha- ways to think about that, you know. So let's just, let's just hold on to that for now and I'm gonna move on to the grant discussion here. Um, shall we go to the one pager?
Yeah.
I just have to navigate documents real quick. Okay. Everybody see this? Okay, should I zoom in maybe? So. There's, there's two grant programs. I guess before we get into either of them, there's two grant programs that we're currently designing. One is. This first kind of diversification grant program. Um, we're calling it the local organization expansion grant for now. The total amount of money allocated is, is about a, about a half million dollars, it's a pretty significant priority. Coming out of that diversification side of TRT. And then there is the other program that is, uh, coming out of. The tourism promotion side of TRT. Total spend is about fifty-five thousand dollars and that's focused on supporting our local tourism. You know, small local mom and pop tours shops, right? Helping them get a higher. Market share of the tourism business we already have in the community. You know, cause they probably don't have as much marketing resources compared to the Hiltons and Marriotts of the world, right? So that's the, the, the kind of high level thought for both of those. One, let's expand our high-paying, um, kind of diversified. Businesses in our community that already exist. Um, and on the other side is let's support our small local tourism shops. Um, so I'm gonna start with the, with the. The, this, this one, the local organization expansion grant. Um, so. Obviously, this is still in draft form. And maybe I should start with, uh. No, I'm gonna do this first. So the, 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 the point really is. To support projects that sustainably raise wages or lower the cost of living for Grand County workers. Within the context of a diversified economy, so. You know, a typical project would be buy a machine, boost your productive capacity, allows a business to hire an additional staff person. At least that's the state program we're modeling this off of. Um, it would be open to all established businesses and nonprofits. And again, with this kind of focus of diversification in mind. We want to break it up, there's so much money there that we want to break it up so that organizations of all sizes. It would be meaningful too. So for the synergies of the world, there's this kind of tier three up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, all the way down to, you know, maybe a single employee side hustle that they're turning into their main gig on the five thousand dollar side of things. Breaking that down, so there'd be a lot of small grants, a couple medium and a, a select few of large grants. There would be match required. Ten percent for the smaller one, twenty percent for the greater one, half of that match would have to be cash with the other half being, you know, any number of. Uh, volunteer labor, materials and supplies, any kind of other. Contributions. We would distribute those funds on a ninety-ten basis, so meaning that ninety percent would be provided upfront. Ten percent upon the completion of a, a report of some kind, so that we get good metrics and outcomes. And to ensure that they actually do that, basically, but focusing on getting the money into the hands of the local businesses first. I, I wanted to quickly note, I think that this could also tie into these childcare priorities. If there's someone who's looking to start a childcare business, I think that would certainly. Play into this notion of diversifying the economy. And so we would have to think of how does that? How does that differ from the money that's coming out of the rural county grant fundings, really targeting childcare, right? But I just wanted to flag that as potential synergies between programs. We are currently saying that other grants. Exclus- so Grand County grants can be matched? Sorry, I'm just making sure that I understand this language.
Excluding Grand County grants, so they can't put our two grants together.
Okay. Fair enough.
Or other Grand County grants.
As currently drafted. Um, how would the, it, it be evaluated? So what we're thinking is to try to ensure kind of objective evaluation. But have community relevance would have. Basically have a city and county representative. Um, a city counselor and a county commissioner. And then have two community representatives, one from the nonprofit community, one from the business community. And then a representative from the state's Office of Economic Opportunity, probably one that we work with a lot. You know, kind of with this lens of trying to show to the state that we're on team. We're on, we're on, on the same team here. And building kind of rapport with the state as a lot of these programming is kind of contingent on continued state support. But they'd also be an expert on economic development work and would provide a kind of outside of the community lens, uh, which I think would be good. The other element is how would we score the applications for this grant? We're thinking something along these lines, so. What is the impact? What kind of factors? Or elements, bottom lines, are you hoping to boost or improve? So that would be. Wages, productivity, benefits, space available. Diversification, how does this organization or project diversify the economy? There's been a lot of back and forth on this, um, in terms of. How, where do we set our sights and how, how explicit are we to exclude organizations by industry? And I think that the outcome is that what we want to do is draft a statement that is. You know, this is what, this is where we're headed, how does your project match this? Uh, and that, and then have the scorers assess. How closely those qualitative responses match the vision that we're setting forth. We'd have to define that. Clearly. The other element is that, you know, as this is somewhat of a pilot program. Um, and if it was a one-off injection of capital, does, um. The project, is it reasonably achievable and how are we ensuring that this isn't, that the impact's gonna go away when the, when this, when the incentive goes away? Um, and then. Adding an element of diversity equity and inclusion on is your organization owned by or does it employ members of a socio-economically disadvantaged group? So as I mentioned before, you know, we pulled some of like the women and minority owned business support. From the rural county grant side, uh, because I think we were setting up. This program to have some of the benefits and targets. For that priority baked into this program. And then some details on the other program. So the tourism business marketing grant. Really looking at projects that boosted visibility and viability of small locally owned tourism businesses and their services. So, um. You know, example could be an online marketing campaign that targets visitors who are already in the mob area and encourage them to use their services. So we're defining small as ten or less full-time equivalent employees. Um, a full-time equivalent would be thirty-five hours per week. We took a look at the state's data and that actually gives us about two-thirds of all businesses in town and. If you look at that list, everyone in that one to five and five to nine. Felt like about the right size and we can share that data with anybody that's curious. The county does have an advertising ordinance currently in place for our office on the marketing side. That promotes only educational or responsible recreation messaging. Um, as a stipulation for any marketing we put out, so that would probably be passed on to these. Campaigns that the businesses would be carrying out. The total amount for the fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted would be eleven five thousand dollar awards, so this is significantly less kind of. In scope compared to the diversification grant. But, you know, we're trying to offer something to everybody at the end of the day. And this would have a ten percent match requirement similar to the, the grant of a similar size on the diversification side, same rules here. Same panel. But the, the scoring criteria would be, you know, focused on return on investment, how does increase revenue that the organization expects from this project? Compared to the organization's typical annual revenue. Does the project engage with other local organizations and advertisers' partners? Um, and does that, do they kind of have a sustainability component to their messaging? Are they educating visitors as a part of this program on how to be good stewards of our land while they're visiting? And then a couple of quick notes, I wanted to add. On just a general, general information across the board. I'm gonna put this in presentation to you. The timeline that we're looking at is. We've already done a couple of these things, so we, we had a county commission workshop. Last week and we brought this to a county open house on land use last week. We had travel council take a look on Tuesday. And this body take a look today. And then we're gonna kind of take everybody's feedback and comments and make adjustments to the current proposal. And have a dedicated, uh, kind of public engagement session pre-launch. In a two weeks time-ish. To get potential, you know, businesses who would be interested, get their feedback to challenge the assumptions that we have. To make sure that, that whatever we're making is actually useful to the end user. And then come back to these bodies, come back to the county commission and launch the, the grants officially in May. At that point, we would do some in-person sessions, uh, and do a webinar. To make it clear what are our expectations, what are our goals? And start kind of the same thing on the childcare side, how are we shopping this and selling people on? This is a good idea and a good program for you to participate in and start thinking of ideas. The, um, intention is to launch the application on July first. Two things going into that deadline are that. We are planning to, as I said, we're working with USU Moab to place that Small Business Development Center position. Based on the timeline that they've pointed out is that the earliest we could get a person in that position would be April first for their ribbon cutting. Which I think is unlikely, but that's, that's, that would be the aggressive goal. And Megan McFaul, who runs the Small Business Development Center in Lending, indicated that, that she would want to. The current plan is to give ninety days of training before kind of unleashing the public's needs onto this new person. Um, and so that would give us such a live first date. As we would want this position to basically be a entry point to the grant program. If you want to apply for this, you need to get an appointment with the Small Business Development Center, talk through your business, talk through your plan. Figure out, is this the best grant program for you? Are there other grant programs that are a better fit? And help support those business owners who might not. You know, have the technical capability to complete a grant but are doing their operations. Very capably and just need some technical support. Maybe they've never done a P and L statement, if that's something that we require of them. Um, and someone's there to help them. We give at this point, you know, create a month of that being open. Close it at the end of the July, convene the scoring committee in August and this first grants in September. So that's, that's a timeline that we're looking at. We want, again, to get everybody on board. Going through the SBDC to A, just kind of vet the applicants, making sure that they have their. Good ideas and, um. You know, that, that their, that their applications are at a level that it will be worth us taking a look at them. And to make sure if there's anything else I missed here. I'm not gonna get into the questions, these are pretty standard, there'd be some kind of more specific questions for each of them. But I guess I'm gonna go back to the two pagers or to the one pager here. And just ask. Get, ask for general feedback from this group on both of the programs, how they're designed, what we're missing. What we, what you'd like to see changed, what you like. Yeah, so I'll, I'll just open it up.
Well, I'll be happy to start. I.
Right, Brad?
I like what you've got. And the only.
And the only things that kind of crossed my mind initially coming out of it is that. This tier three grant, for example. I'm wondering, you know, you have, you have restrictions on the money and you have restrictions on. How it has to go out and all that kind of stuff. And I was wondering on this tier three is if there's an opportunity with a bigger business. That we're trying to help out, that it's a low interest loan. And you go so far and then you can grant out half of it or something, right? So that we don't have to use all the money or we get some of the money back so we can reuse it for other things. On companies that could really use. You know, $100,000 loan on a $200,000 piece of equipment that they can finance. And we're financing the bottom half for 2%, right? Or 0% to be paid back. I'm just trying to always recycle money and get money back if there's, if there's a way to do that, that, that makes sense, right? So some smaller things that that's hard to do and, and, and I get that. We're not necessarily want to be in the micro. Micro fund, micro loan fund business. The other thing is, is on that first one, the, where the bigger grants are. The real key is going to be how do you evaluate the applications? Both on that, the things that you want to have. Metrics, impact, diversification, feasibility, duration, diversity, equity and inclusion. But also we need to do some just basic. Reviews. And I'm, I'm happy to provide you with stuff that you can incorporate on business viability. So that as you're looking at it, is this a viable business? If it is, okay, let's take a look now at its impact, diversity, feasibility and duration and, and, and diversity and equity and see how it rates there. Maybe you can do a split score, maybe you can do a combined score, but I think you need to also have some. You know, you got a basic business. Questions in there as well, just to, 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 to do well, okay? I mean, it's easy to, to answer all these questions. But it's hard to see if they can actually execute to answering. The metrics that you want of impact and diversity, diversification, et cetera. So that's the only thing I have and, and you're going into this general application questions and that's probably what we got to review, right?
Yeah, so that's, I think this is, this is our starting point as to.
You want to send that out? I'd be, I'd be happy to review it.
I can send this whole slideshow out at the end of it.
August?
Yep.
Was the. That grant also open to, to people who are starting businesses or was it just existing?
Yeah, it said existing, didn't it?
That, that is how we've written it. I think. Like I think, I think I'm certainly open to.
And, and there.
Yeah, I think the intention is more on the viability than. Then if it exists or not, really, because I think the intention is that. We're trying to support things that will actually happen. And I think our starting point there was if you exist, there's some baked in viability, you've been around for a year or two.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. History is a good predictor of the future. Past success is a good predictor of future success, so there's. And, and predicting somebody off an idea is really hard.
Right.
And, and, but doesn't mean they haven't had a little business that's not making any money yet because they've been working on it for a year. And they have a good business plan and they're getting ready to launch. And so where do we fit in their? What you call a capital stack, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that I'm. Zooming out from like either of these programs, I think longer term. What I really want to see our department foster is a kind of start to end. Ecosystem for if you're that, if you're that business with a great idea and some capital. But you're not really sure where to start, but you go to the Small Business Development Center. They say, here's all the things that are out there and that we have kind of an annual cohort type program for entrepreneurial development. Where you and five other business entrepreneurs or maybe, maybe, maybe it's just an idea. You get, you know, 30 day, here's how finance works, a 30 day, this XYZ. And that these grant programs that we're offering are kind of at the end of it. Or maybe there's a new one that's not kind of for existing business that's at the end of it that helps you launch. And that, you know, at the business summit every year in the future that there's like, here's this new cohort of businesses. That have gone through this year-long program and we're here to kind of present, present them to the community. Get them to give their pitch and, you know, provide some free marketing. And that, you know, this is the type of ecosystem that we're developing through the programs we're creating. So that this is ongoing organic thing in the community. And I think this is just the step one of that.
Yeah, I, it's just a matter of evaluating the business to see if you think that it's, it's truly viable or if it's just really an idea.
Yeah, so I think on that, if you could just take, I'll send these slides out or I'll have Rachel or Ben do it. But take a look at this general application question section and just add what we're missing. Or, or what we don't need, we're not going to ask all of these, I think this is a menu to start with. But, you know, trying to balance making a complete application without trying to make it onerous, right? We don't want.
Right, right.
Want to really hit that balance.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't 144 hour SPA loan app.
Right. Um, Sheik, do you have any comments on, on any of this here?
Yeah, um, I think you're, you're on the right track and I really like the kind of almost. I, I think what, what I'm getting from you is that you're really trying to base this with a, a, almost a community. New business incubation type of ecosystem. That we could help foster, right, as, as a county? So I think, I think that's, this is a great process, great work. I love the two, two different grants and I think you've really diversified. Hitting really most of the, most of the businesses that's currently in town.
Thanks, Sheik. Rob, I think, I don't think we heard from you on the grant program. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything, I guess at this point, it seems like it's very thorough. I guess I'm, you know, be curious. I think it's unclear whether you're going to get good proposals or not. Especially for the big, the big ones. So I wonder, I'm guessing, you know, you don't, you're not going to be obligated to fund anything if, let's say. You know, you don't get any really good proposals for higher up, but that, that'd be my main concern.
Yeah, and then the, the details on the money side here is that, you know, this is our tax revenue from TRT. That is specifically focused from, for diversification based on state law. So if we don't spend, you know, we have a million dedicated to diversification of which half a million is going towards this grant, this grant program, the, the bigger one. If that and the other underlying programs don't get all spent out this year, it goes to our reserves, right? So it doesn't disappear or it does not like a ticking time bomb.
Does it roll over?
Say that again?
Does it roll over or does it go to the general fund?
No, I think it's, I don't think it, it, I don't think it goes into a. General fund, I think we have a specific TRT.
It'll roll over, it'll roll over for you, so you'll just have more next year.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And that's allowed with that, August?
Say that one more time.
And that's allowed with that money?
That's how, that's how we've used the other TRT money in the past, like we've, we have had a surplus. For example, last year, and that's gone into the reserves. And I believe those reserves have, if not the exact same stipulations. You know, what's in our TRT reserves are, are subject to some TRT restrictions. It's not like if we don't spend it, it'll go get spent on water mains. Or, or OSTA, which would all be good uses in the scheme of what's good for the community. But it's, it's not like a user loses scenario for our department necessarily. And then again, the other, the other, the other reason, the other two factors kind of. Guiding our thinking of just, we need to launch something is that. You know, this diversification stream of TRT has a five-year sunset. Meaning that it basically gets automatically repealed unless we have really good data as justification to the state to say. Hey, you get, you threw us a bone, we said we need flexibility on this TRT money. And we stepped up to the plate, we designed really good things, we experimented, we were innovative. And here's all of the incredible results that we've gotten. And we think that. You know, and, and working with the hotel lobby and the, and the tourism side. Who are hesitant about initially about this kind of. Focus on the money and saying that, you know, this isn't harming the tourism industry in the MOAB area. That this is actually fostering a greater ecosystem and livability. In Grand County. And so those are for, that's kind of for our office and for the county from a legislative strategy side, but that all plugs into this. And the other part of that is that, you know. My, I have a priority to develop this. A master plan process, put RFP together and do some planning that is inclusive of the whole scope of everything, not just a childcare focus or just the grant focus. But really, how does our office with tourism business film? How does the larger Grand County ecosystem work? And what are the goals from the community, from the politicians, from the various stakeholders of the future of economic development in Grand County? To inform all of this so that we have a clearer mandate next time around when we're designing these things and deciding how to spend these limited funds. Rob, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to. And that all sounds good, what you said, I have a totally different thought on this. I'm just thinking about like how this could go wrong. And it seems like. You know, you're kind of, I mean. You're daily a big carrot, you're, but you're, you're also like asking people to be creative. And to think of how they can apply for this and qualify for it. So I wonder if it almost makes sense that maybe you wait a week or something or see what the applications you get. But you might want to, you know, expect that and plan for. Maybe your department, August, and maybe us, we should come up with some suggestions that we bring to businesses and say. Here's something we thought that synergy could do or something. Because asking them to think outside the box a little bit on how they can like get this money, maybe they'll do it. And they'll come up with great stuff, but maybe, you know, you guys, August and Ben. Will can think of things and reach out to businesses and to say, you know, here's something for bike rental businesses or here's something for, you know. Like a restaurant idea and give them an example because it. Just to make sure you get really good applications, because what I wouldn't like is only have a few people come up with things that aren't. That aren't maybe the best and then you kind of feel obligated to fund them.
Sure.
Talking about diversification here too, so I mean, I'm, I'm assuming we're including businesses that are not necessarily like. You know, your typical tourist business, but maybe supporting businesses like your, you, you, maybe your HVAC guys and.
Right.
Businesses like that, because I know, you know, like MOAB heat and cool has had a horrible time just getting enough techs. And keeping up with the business that they have coming in because it's a lot. I mean, we have a lot of, a lot more hotels. And there's a need for those supportive services. And if those businesses can't keep up or can't expand to keep up with the growth. You know, then they, everybody suffers too from that.
Absolutely, and I think those are the exact types of things that we're thinking in mind. And to your point, Rob, we are asking people to be creative and I, and I kind of think of this program as a, as a research tool. You know, to inform what should, what should our diversification strategy? Because we don't know what's on the ground and we can ask people, we have, we can, you know, we can provide the carrot that is. Pizza to show up to a, a community event night where then you'll tell us what you think diversification will be. But to have people provide real substantive ideas to expand what they're doing or to say, hey, I exist. You know, that's going to be, that's going to be really good evidence and research for us to base a diversification strategy. Off at least what we have locally before we start thinking of what do we need to start thinking about outside the community? That would be like a long range feature stuff, right? I think Ben, you had something you wanted to add?
Oh, it's moot at this point, but I was just saying, Rob, that some, you kind of hit on something that we've been thinking about and. At the bottom of that one pager is this feedback form that we're trying to get folks to fill out since we're having this meeting. I don't really think that's necessary for you all to do, but everyone on this call has some unique background and experience. And I think it'd be really helpful for us to preempt what kind of projects we think are good. And what are eligible and whatnot? So if you could put yourself in the mind of someone who might apply to this. And give us examples, any of you, that would be really helpful for us and continue to design this. And when we put together those, how to apply resources and whatnot. We want to definitely use this as a research tool to figure out what's out there, but also kind of try and do some thinking for people like you were pointing out. So if folks have ideas, that's really helpful for us. So send them our way. You don't have to use the Google form, you can just email us.
Awesome.
Well, that's.
Well, I think, did Sheik, did you, did Sheik have something?
No, no, I thought that was a good comment. No, great ideas, guys, this is, uh, this is exciting for the community, awesome.
Awesome, well, that's the end of our agenda. Uh, I'll, I'll say, I'll, I'll open the floor for last comments or else we have 10 minutes until we're done here and we might actually finish early, which would be great.
So are we going to visit like the, the parts that we skipped as far as funding the housing and the other things on there that we had prioritized? At our next meeting, is that the, the thought on that?
I, I think so, and that could also be good homework, you know? I, I think one thing that I'm thinking on housing in the scheme of everything that, everything, every. Everything that everyone's doing, whether it's the land trusts, private developers, HOSU, community rebuilds. It seems like a potential, you know, we talked about ADUs, supporting ADUs is something that it could be interesting. But I wonder if this money could be a useful character. Leverage what Ben was talking about earlier in that employer housing survey, which 50% of employers are willing to put some money. Into housing, even if so long as they're not liable to operate. And, you know, deal with the legal issues and, and the, the sticky side of employment, right? Or, or housing. So may, maybe some research that we could do or that if y'all could think about is. You know, is there some way for, for us to use some money as a honeypot to say, this is a matching fund? And every dollar that we, that, that the private sector puts in. You know, we, we can come up with some public private solution with the developer who might already exist. And just see regardless of project, how much, how much money is out there that people would be willing to contribute? To some kind of a apartment complex that would be workforce seat restricted, developed locally for locals. I don't know, that's, that's where my brain is starting to think. I'm not a developer, but it seems like there, and I know Brendan is thinking a lot about this of really, how can? Everybody be working together, but it seems like people are asking for that incentive, help us be a partner in this process. And I think there, that could be a way to think about these funds possibly.
Well, I kind of think too, like I, I do believe that when we did part B, we were actually applying for $600,000, right?
Yeah.
And since we only got three, I would say the county probably would think that it would be. It would make sense to just put the rest of what we had allocated from part A towards the same project that we already put. Our part B money towards.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be simple, easy way to do it this year.
Abs- absolutely.
And then go, you know, and then expand on those ideas of, of how we use it the next round and get more. And I, I do like the idea of a matching fund there for employers.
Yeah, Rob, thanks, Jasmine.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right time or forum, but. In terms of ideas, ways to spend money to, from the housing issue. One thing that hasn't been talked about, I feel like that we haven't talked about, that I've talked with, you know, Caitlin Myers about, uh, who runs the land trust, the Royal Crossing Development. Is the idea of kind of starting a, like a program like fail in deeds program where you. Restrictions. I think that, I, I think we could do a much better, a much more, let me say, a cost effective. I don't think bail is like. They're paying like $60,000 for a deed restriction. The houses are obviously more expensive there. The deed restriction is just primary residence, so you know, arguably doesn't really detract value that much. You could have a remote worker move here and they could still buy the house. But at least it makes it, makes it so it's not a dark home. So I really like the idea of, I mean, it's sort of like a, it's not as. I think it'd be a pretty easy thing to implement and a lot of people would want to do it and you could kind of set it up. Like, I feel like, what is it called, like a reverse Dutch auction or something where what you do is you say, we have $100,000 to buy deed restrictions. And so if you want to do that for your home XYZ person, tell us what your price is. And then we're going to start at the lowest price and we're going to go up until we run out of money. And I bet a lot of people that live in their homes that have no intention of selling them. I, I feel like you could incentivize a lot of people to do it in the very beginning, especially people that are passionate about this. I I feel like you could incentivize a lot of people to do it in the very beginning, especially people that are passionate about this for five or $10,000 maybe. And so that could be a program that would be, you know, very easy to run and operate. It won't have a huge impact any one year, but something that we probably need to do so we don't over time turn over our housing stock.
Right. I totally agree. I'm gonna I'm gonna stop it there. Five minutes till great ideas. I think that. Takeaways here. For the next month is that Ben and I are gonna are gonna, you know, hold, take all of these feedbacks. Comments onto the grant programs, flush them out, do public engagements. And then we'll work with Rob to schedule some kind of a childcare, open house, round table discussion before the next meeting. And those are the kind of the two main outcomes and we'll make sure that thinking about housing and diversity equity and inclusion will be thrown on to the next agenda. And and then the other other part will be that I will be focusing with Ben on. Fleshing out the the board, getting a new county commission liaison. And I think we're going to stick to this 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 second Thursday. Second Thursday, three to five monthly and make any bylaw adjustments necessary to do that. That just makes it a little easier for our department. We'll have travel council Tuesday, diversification Wednesday and economic development Thursday. And then we have a month to actually do some work. So we can report back on rather than having board meetings distributed throughout the month. So I think that this is a good place to start for us.
We are, did you just say that we are back to monthly or?
Yeah, monthly. Yep.
And 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 if you want to, we attach this one pager to the agenda. If you want to pass it around to anyone in your business, nonprofit, whatever circles. There's great ways for them to give us feedback. We definitely want to hear from the public before the public engagement session. So.
Totally.
Pass it around.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. I appreciate it so much. I appreciate all your continued dedication and membership and and energy on all this. So thanks so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, you guys.
Hi, Sam.